Okay, welcome everybody to our regular meeting for the City Council of the City of Perry. Let's begin with roll call.
Coffee.
Here.
Bloodso.
Here.
Marshall.
Davis.
Here.
Cold Iron.
Here.
Ruff.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Boucher.
Here.
Here. All right, we've got Quorum, and I'll offer the invocation for tonight. Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for this day and for your Son Jesus Christ, for the example that he is to us, and the teachings that helped guide us to do what is right, to be servants for our community. Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to serve and for the capacity and the stewardship which we have as a City Council. Father, we ask for a blessing that we can be mindful of those whom we serve for our community and for the progress that we see happening in Perry. Bless us with discernment that we can make wise decisions. And, Father, these things we pray for in the name of your Son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
All right, let's start off with item number one, our consent agenda. To approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Oh, there we go.
And Coffee.
Yes.
Bloodso.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Ruff.
Yes.
Williams. Boucher. Yes. Worthen.
All right. So we'll just get down to item number five, profferments, commendations, reports, and inquiries by the governing body. So we'll start with our council reports. Word one. Shay?
I had a couple people reach out about the open record request. I told them we're still continuing to talk about it.
Yep, we'll have that on the agenda tonight. Scott?
I had one citizen contact me so that they witnessed a almost pedestrian run over at Fifteenth and Third, a kid about on school let out. Wanted to know if we had ever considered or would consider maybe putting crosswalks in there. With all of our.
At Fifteenth and Third.
Is there not a crosswalk there?
You mean the electronic ones that.
They tell you when to walk, not.
Gotcha.
So are you talking across where, or are you talking across Fifteenth?
Yeah.
Probably above.
Probably across. Crossing, they, the kids were crossing there, but I mean, if we're going to do it, I would think we would do it all.
Have to reach out to ODOT, right?
Yeah, so I could reach out and ask them.
Since we're doing too much sidewalk work and different things.
Yeah, let me ask them. It's, I mean, child safety is obviously something that's super important.
Mm-hmm. And he said that the, what he witnessed, he couldn't tell if any longer who was at fault.
Right.
And with the school, so much activity with the schools there now.
I guess even with, well, I mean, that might be part of the design when we do Seventh and, but I mean, just thinking of the other intersections going down for, I don't think any of them have.
No.
Crosswalks, do you think?
No. You mean where the stoplights are?
Yeah. I don't think any of them do.
Maybe let's call them up and bring it up. Voice is concerned.
Thank you, Scott. All right, awesome.
Don't have anything.
No? Joe?
Me neither.
Randy?
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. Derek? Sammy?
Well, I think the lights on the square look beautiful. That's all I wanted to say.
Yes, they do. And then I guess with that, we do have the Main Street Parade is this Saturday. So I mean, there's a number of things on Saturday. There's the pet parade.
Train.
Yeah.
Treatments have events.
Yeah, so there's quite a few events all day on Saturday for everybody, and that's usually a pretty fun and good turnout.
All up the square.
Yeah, yeah. All up the square. Pet Parade's at like 10:00, I think. And then the parade in the evening is 6:00?
Yeah.
Yeah, 6:00.
It's the Christmas parade.
Yeah, yeah.
If you want real entertainment, it's my first time to have to work, come back, so.
Let's go to the.
So in between those events, there's some entertainment after.
Yes, probably so.
You break down the menu.
No.
Excellent.
That was funny.
Well, let's jump on down to item number six, our CFO remarks and monthly invoice.
Okay, month of November has already gone past. Amazing. We did our monthly work, we did some additional work on sales tax analysis, looking at the SIC code, which is the standard industry code, and how sales tax breaks down by those industry codes. We also did a little work on E911, budget and follow-up on that, and we are continuing to work on the audit. In fact, I worked on it this morning. There are a couple of little things that we're working through between the delineation between holdings and the Perry facility authority. So those two are two separate entities, so we're trying to make sure that we have the reporting on that crystal clear as far as what the city is and what is the separate legal entity. So we're working through that with the auditor.
And she's going to be presenting to us?
Hopefully we'll be ready at the end of, I mean, like, she asked when our next meeting was.
Okay.
So I am hopeful that it'll be at the end of the month. So.
All right, any other questions for Meredith? All right, thank you, Meredith. Item number seven, presentation of City Attorney Report and Monthly Invoice.
As you can see, my report's a little more brief this month. I was out of the country for a week, and then there was the Thanksgiving holiday, so there was less work and more play. The good, the first thing that's mentioned, of course, that we all celebrated that, except for Councilperson Ruff who wasn't here.
No.
Celebrate with us, and I thought we were all thinking he would be the, one of the most interested in the celebration, but I guess you've learned by now who Project Duke is. Well, we've been hiding that secret for, you know, a long time.
Nobody told you?
Nobody told me.
They haven't?
No.
I'll tell you after that.
No, no.
It's Amazon.
Oh, fantastic.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
I would have told you that earlier when I talked to you.
You've been keeping that secret from him.
For two weeks. I know this is a public meeting, but we're going to do a big reveal in the next week and a half.
Which is why we didn't want to.
Yeah, which is.
So you're just waiting to tell me then, right?
Yeah. No, actually, I did.
Who goes to invite me up to the square?
So that's why we kind of kept it on the DL even though it is technically public now.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
But, you know, there were many pieces of that. One was getting it closed, the other piece were the, the things that we had to do to get that closed, including transfer of property to, to another party and a check and the likes, all that got done. To now point, I really have no update. I did text him today, I wanted to bring something tonight, but I didn't get yet response. There was a lot of work in zoning and planning. You know, we had our big HP meeting, we had a meeting in front of the Plan Commission on an application to vacate A Street, and under administrative, you know, we, we finalized and then flushed the chicken duck ordinance and, you know, some work on this open record ordinance that we will discuss today. There were, there were two court sessions, there was letters that go out to hangar owners that, that haven't repaired their hangars in the wake of some windstorms, and the hangar construction rules that a month ago or so, the trustees approved. There was an important meeting with the ADA on a potential public improvement project, which may be coming from the county soon, and I assisted there with a, with a memo on, on possible finance. I will tell you that your, that your financing, your FAP financing, is closing on December 17th with an action before the Water Board, and so funds ought to be available, you know, this year, and that work can be started just as soon as, as, as we get out the, the bids and the information and get that done. So that was something that the council really wanted to get on. You know, it's cold, and it sometimes gets real cold here and can cause disturbances. So that's December 17th, and that is my shortened report.
All right. Thank you, Bryce. Any questions for Bryce? We'll go on to item number eight. All right, get ready for this. Read it off. All right, item number eight. Consider approval of ordinance number 2025-24 of the City Council of the City of Perry, Oklahoma, amending Chapter 1, Article 7 of Perry Municipal Code 2022 by the adoption of a new article entitled City Records, providing for Section 2-701 entitled Purpose, providing for Section 2-702 entitled Statement of Policy, providing for Section 2-703 entitled Appointment of Open Record and Record Retention Custodians, providing for Section 2-704 entitled Open Record Requests, providing for Section 2-705 entitled Processing Record Requests, providing for Section 2-706 entitled Scope of Record Search, providing for Section 2-707 entitled Records in Storage, providing for Section 2-708 entitled Computer Records, providing for Section 2-709 entitled Fees for Records, providing for Section 2-710 entitled Accountability of Four Funds, providing for Section 2-711 entitled Open Record Form Adopted, providing for Section 2-712 entitled Legal Questions, providing for Section 2-713 entitled Reserved, retaining Section 7-214 entitled Destruction of Public Records, scanning and storing public records, providing for the repealer of the current Section 7 dash, or 2-701 through 2-713 and Sections 2-711, 2-712, and 2-713 of Chapter 18 entitled Fee Schedule, providing for savings, providing for codification, providing for severability, and declaring emergency.
I think if we bring this back next meeting, you'll have it all down.
I know, I'll have it memorized by then.
Can I speak a little bit to this one there?
Yeah.
So I know there were a couple of questions about transparency on this, and I think that those questions are important. I know that that's, that's one of the aspects of our strategic plan, right, is communication and transparency. And this was obviously approved at the state level and now is being distributed to the municipalities in Oklahoma to adopt. And the intent behind this is because in recent years municipalities have been being hit with large and broad FOIA requests, which take a crazy amount of time to fulfill. And frankly, they're not even from residents in most cases. Like, we have one here that I printed tonight. I won't read the, you know, the requester, but it was a, a request from Delaware. And if you listen to some of the things that were asked for, they want, they wanted, this was two months ago, and they asked for all of these things between January of 2021 and two months ago. And they wanted department level or segmented purchasing data, any readily available reports. What does that mean exactly? Records grouped by department, purchase order numbers, all purchase order numbers, purchase dates, vendor IDs or names, department or issuing entity, line item descriptions, quantities, unit prices, total prices. And then they broke down how they would like that given, whether it was spreadsheet or PDF. So you can, you can see something that broad would be, one, very difficult to fulfill, and, two, very expensive to fulfill. In fact, we were talking about it earlier, it would probably, we joked that it would double what we pay our CFOs for the year just from fulfilling that one request, which I think is probably an exaggeration, but it would be very expensive to fulfill something like that. And that the state has recognized that people are doing this, they're taking advantage of these laws that are meant to make us transparent. And so they've put these guardrails in place for municipalities to adopt, and that is really the, the intent of this ordinance.
Do we get a lot of, I guess we'll call it, third-party requests like that one from Delaware?
Yeah, great question. Christie would be the best one to ask that because they oftentimes come to her.
The ones we get the most are, it's like I was telling Meredith today, I got one again for the second time in two weeks. We just fulfilled it, and now the same people are asking for it again. Basically, it's, I want to know who works for you, what they, what they make, where they live, what's their phone number. They're asking for stuff that, look, that's, you're not getting all that, but that happens at least once a month. It's a, usually a payroll one, a lot of times. Occasionally, uh, once or twice a year, maybe three or four, you'll get some, not quite as broad as that one. That one you get at least once a year. One, they want all your vendor information and everything, so. It depends. I mean, sometimes it seems like they're one right after the other, and you'll get a break for a little bit, but a lot of times it's through the payroll, and they're, every one of them are commercial. It's like that one, that was just, you know. If I would have got all that information, those people never contacted me again after sending it. They put it on the form, I contacted them, I let them know, you know, about how long it would take, and I never heard from them again.
So we lucked out in that case, but the, this, this change in.
Well, that one went around, I wasn't the only clerk, that one went around, it was actually in one of our email chains, through all the clerks. Almost everyone that I know got that one.
Yeah, so it, it's, you know, it is a challenge, and transparency is, is a big deal, but you as a council have the responsibility, I think, to balance transparency with wise use of staff time, right? And it's, in my opinion, not fair for the residents of Perry to pay for the staff to spend hours and hours fulfilling a FOIA request from someone from Delaware, that they're going to just commercially sell.
What's the current process for requesting records? And what would it look like with the changes that we make?
Bryce, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. And, and I think briefly, you know, just to let you know, the law's changed. I mean, all we're doing is reflecting the new law on our code, and that's all we're doing. Whether or not you pass the ordinance, the law's changed. And when people file broad requests like that, I mean, we're going to ask them to be more specific, because the law says we can. And we're going to ask them to limit the date period, and we're going to ask them to give us search terms so that we can find it quickly. And if it's for a commercial purpose, it's under existing ordinance, we're going to, we're going to charge a search fee, because that's under existing ordinance. It's just that under this ordinance, we've used the fees that are, that are adopted by the Attorney General. You know, we actually looked and said, are ours right, or, you know, who's it right? Well, the guy that goes around the state and talks about this is the Attorney General, so we figured, well, we use his, his. So, I mean, this is the law, you know. Now, in answer to the question, if, if you turn to Tab 8 is, is the ordinance, and, and the OML, I'd like to take credit for this form, but, but, but I can't, it's, it's Exhibit C. I will take credit for changing the title at the top, it said municipalities, and I changed it to City of Perry.
But is this different from this one?
Yeah, it, it's an appendix at the end of the ordinance. In fact, it's probably at the end of this, too.
Is it all in there?
Yeah, yeah, it's all in there. And I will tell you that this language in the front is something that Derek and I debated this morning, and I think that Derek has hit something, you know, he's saying, who are those record custodians? You know? And so when we actually talked about it, we talked about different ways to do it, he said, well, we're going to say who the record custodians are and where the, the location of their offices are, and we're going to put that on the form, and we're going to post that on our webpage and, and, and in, and in City Hall, outside and inside City Hall, and out here in this building and with the county clerk, so that if there's any question, they can get that or they can find it on the webpage. So that was a good, I thought, suggestion, which.
Record custodian new to this?
No, it, the, the old ordinance named the record custodians. It said the police chief shall be in charge of his, the fire chief, the city clerk and all that. In this particular ordinance, what we did is we said, he's your manager, he designates who the record custodians are. And, and so that was the change in, in this ordinance from the one you currently have listed, and there's some that weren't listed. So, I mean, this is a much better way of, of naming those people. Truthfully, open records, it's the city clerk, and it's, and it's Connie with, with the Police Department. I mean, that's who pretty much does it. Now, that isn't to say that the Fire Department doesn't get requests for records, and a lot of these, if it involves personnel or something, or if it involves an accident, or, you know, there's going to be a deposition, they'll, they'll run it by me and, you know, we'll kind of take a look at it, but to the major extent, it's Connie with the Police Department, and it's the city clerk. But, but if you go to that tab, that, that was handed out by the OML, and they sent those out. And so this is the document that we're going to give them, and, and they said, well, why can't I just call and ask? Well, we need to make sure that we got your, your request right.
Which is actually new, that's part of the change.
Yeah, and that's part of it, that, that's part of it. I mean, we want to make sure that we got your request right. So tell us what you're requesting specifically so that we can get that. And if it's too broad, then we'll, you know, it says suggest specific terms, search dates and the like, dates, range, that's all from the law. And so you put in your name, your email address, and, and we talk about what the cost can be, and then we run through these, you know, this is right out of the, right out of the state law, and, and right out of the form that OML provided. And then the next page is the internal use. We run through this and who's responsible for it and what the charges are, and we kind of add those up. If there are to be charges, in many cases, there aren't to be charges, and you can read where those times are. If you look under Attorney's Search Times, there are times when no search fees shall be charged for the media, for authors, for scholars, for taxpayers who are trying to seek out, you know, to make sure that we're doing our job. You know, those are times when they, when they cannot be charged, and that's the state law, that's not our rule. And we have to be, you know, we have to make sure that, 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 of course, is followed.
The request wouldn't be charged?
Huh?
The requester wouldn't be charged?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, there's times when there, yeah, the请求er will not be charged any search fees. And of course, any person can come and review the records. This is only when they're requesting copies of them. I mean, if they want to come down, we will come and pull out the records and let them go through invoices and a lot. Now, when we do that, somebody does need to sit there because.
Right, right.
You can't have this go on, you know? And so somebody does have to, does, somebody does have to be there, but, you know, I would say that as far as transparency, you know, we brought this to the council because we were actually trying to be transparent. These laws have been adopted, and, and we're going to follow these laws that are being adopted. See, some legislation is enabling legislation, and you have to adopt ordinances to implement it, and some of it is self-executing. Okay? This is self-executing, okay? But our ordinances were old, you know, and there was no reason not to bring them up to speed with, with what the new state laws, so that's what we, you know, that's what we've tried to do.
I could give an example just real quick on what a typical one might look like. So like, we got one from a resident the other day that was fairly comprehensive, but it was from a resident, you know, and she had real concerns and real questions, and, and, you know, we didn't, we didn't jump in and say, she didn't follow the rules exactly, it wasn't submitted to Christie, you know, she sent it to me, and I just, I, I copy and pasted it into a Google Doc, and I started working on it, and there were 10 answers of the 20 she asked for that I knew, or I could find in 10 seconds, and I put all those on, and then the other ones I went through and said, okay, this is going to take a few hours to find, it's going to take, you know, 15 minutes to find, and I kind of rated them that way. is gonna take, you know, 15 minutes to find. And I kind of rated them that way. And then I made some suggestions. Hey, if you changed this and said between these dates or something, it would be a lot faster and I think it would still meet your needs. So we really do try to be helpful and send that back to her. And that satisfied her needs. You know, she wasn't charged anything for that. And that's kind of the approach we take, you know, is the goal isn't to keep things from residents. I want to share things with residents. I want them to understand. I think we have a very well-run city and I'm happy to show them that through our records. But the law does exist to protect us from these types of asks that I think are frankly unreasonable.
If that person didn't come in?
They didn't.
And in the future, they would have to come in?
Oh, no. They can email us the document and we'll respond off an email or anything. They just have to put it in writing.
Yeah. And to my point, I mean, I think that, one of the points I was trying to make Shay is that I don't really care if they follow procedure exactly. You know, the people I want to stick the procedure to are these ones who, we don't want to waste time funding your business. But if you're a resident, you know, and you want information, we'll share that information with you. I'm not gonna make you jump through every single loop to get it.
Yeah, and I can't tell you how many times I've done it. You know, I get a call, want to copy the chicken ordinance. You know, what's your email? I mean, you know, we do that if it comes to, you do that, right? I mean, you've done that a number of times. It's just, and we don't want to pick and choose. We don't want to equal protection, you know, argument here that we're doing it to some folks but not doing it to other folks. But if you've got a detailed request, you know, it needs to be put in writing so that, so that we can respond properly.
You don't miss something.
Sorry, I didn't know you were continuing.
No.
One thing Bryce and I talked about was the duties that we have as a city, and that's a response to a request. So if it does get submitted to someone, there has to be a response from the municipality.
If not under the act, it goes to this AG group. It goes to the AG. And the AG finds, if you haven't responded, then they can bring both civil and criminal charges against us, you know? And I will tell you that I took a look, because I didn't follow this in the legislature, to see how controversial was this. And in the fourth vote, there were a number of votes in the Senate on it. In the fourth vote, it was 38 to 4 to 5. So 38 passed, four were opposed to it, including, I guess, Boren's son, I saw his name. He opposed it. And there were five that were excused from being there. So controversial? No, not really. That's, 38's, you know, a number in the Senate.
What is the response if they send that email request? They don't fill out the form? What's the response back to them?
I fill out the form.
You just reply with that?
Yeah, fill out the form.
A lot of times, people send the form back. I've never had anybody complain about that.
Yeah.
Because they know putting it in writing, it's gonna help me get what they want. It's the big ones that are so broad, I don't know really half of what they're really looking for. I mean, if you know what you're wanting and know what you're looking for, it makes it easier on me to be able to find what you're looking for.
Well, they're looking for vendor lists so they can sell them. You know, they can sell them in the market. I mean, that's, for the most part, that's what they're looking for. And what clients, have what type of products, and they're just, they're trying to provide gateways.
And so in today's world, that request, we've got an email back saying, we have a form. If you want information, you need to fill it out.
You need to fill it out and you need to be more specific in what you're asking for, and it's gonna cost as much.
Because I'm conflicted. I don't want to sound like a guy that went to one class and is now an expert. But in my initial training, one of the topics was on this particular subject. And, you know, they talked about the people who are wanting this information for commercial purposes, but also just bad actors that send out requests to 10,000 cities by email, hoping just to slow down the process or to plug the system or in the case of smaller cities, just stop work because they've been overloaded with requests.
And these small cities, they call me worried.
Yes.
Because there's only one. And they only work four hours a day. And they only work three days a week. And what am I gonna do? I mean, I mean, that was part of it.
Yeah, there was less than a handful of cities in Oklahoma that actually had staff that do this as their task. So.
And frankly, we don't either.
Do we have to have an email option? Or can it just be, you gotta walk in?
Oh, no. I want to make sure. I think we should have an email option.
I think it.
Yeah, I mean, in today's day, you know, in fact, you know, it would be nice is if this could be made up into a form on, as a page.
An electronic form.
Electronic, and they could send it in. We could respond electronically.
Well, the one they sent is electronic from OML.
Yeah, that one was electronic. And so if we could, if we could do that and better explain that on the webpage, that would be advantageous.
99% of the ones that we get are emailed to. I very rarely have people walk in, so.
Because I agree with, you know, transparency is part of our job, but it's also protecting the city from bad actors.
What's the most common request from residents?
Christie, you'd be able to answer that better than me.
From residents?
How much, how much do I make?
Salary budget.
I mean.
It's these two.
That's a big question.
And salary. And salary.
Is that something we can put on the website?
Yeah, so a lot of cities, what they'll do is they'll actually publish with their budget, they'll publish a salary range schedule. And something.
At least what we can.
Like to have.
As much as we can transparent.
Right.
I think that's a good point, though, that if, I know you're not joking, if that's really what the most common, then let's just, let's like be open. I don't know where you put it. I don't know what's appropriate. But my fear whenever this was introduced a couple of weeks ago was that it looked like we could be hurrying something through and would everyone be able to do it? Because I was thinking that they would have to come in. So if they can email, then that's perfect. And if it's a way to protect the city and still be able to help our residents, then, then, yeah. But I don't know what to answer, how you would say. Like, we're not hiding anything. This is, this is the records.
Well, we never had Russ's in my bill on the agenda. I mean, for, I've been here 39 years and we started it. What do you think, Meredith?
I feel like I was with this council.
Yeah, yeah, it's part of what you have done.
On three years, and I don't think it was.
Huh?
I don't think it was on when I first started.
No, I, no, I'm gonna tell you, it wasn't. It wasn't in an effort to hide anything. Although I tell you in my bill, because it's legal and because some of it's confidential, it may look detailed. Sometimes it's not very detailed, you know? And that's on purpose. I detail it when I can detail it, you know? And I don't, I don't really, I mean, it's public record. People could have it, but, you know, it's your legal business, you know? And there's, it's still a public record. People could have it if they want. They're certainly entitled to know how much any vendor makes and the gross wages of any employee. Okay? Now, they're not entitled to know what the net wages are because they're not entitled to know what the deductions are. And of course, no bank information, social security, or address. They're allowed to check on your electric bill, your electric bill at your residence. But I cannot tie your name with your address. But I can say whether or not your account has been deferred because you haven't paid it, you know, and that you paid penalties. People are allowed to come in and pull full-scale, you know, detail about people's, about people's billing but can't tie it to a person. Why can't they tie it to a person?
People's billing are just fine because they're on the council.
No, anybody's. Anybody in town, anybody in town, you can get information on anybody's utility account in town and all this detail, but it doesn't tie to a name because we're trying to protect people from predators, you know? You can't find out where, you can't find out where people live from us, okay? That ties a name to an address. And so, you know, sometimes we've got to, and of course, all juvenile stuff has to be, all banking information, all kinds of numbers. Doing this does take some time, and particularly with respect to police records. I mean.
Except for the act so much.
Yeah, we really have to look at a lot of that. And yet, video cams, you know, most of that is all public record. If it was taken by a, and that's why you see all that on Facebook and other places, because that's all public information, so.
So whenever there's a request for salaries, you just, they go through the process and they get it?
Absolutely.
And is that like overwhelming the system now?
Yeah.
We actually, we keep it kind of updated already. So that one's, when people call for, they'll call the email. When they do that one, that one's really easy because all I have to do is say, Rebecca, update this for me. Because we can just simply run a report. We've got a report now that simply just runs the titles and, and stuff. I mean, they get to know your name, unfortunately, how much you make and.
Would that be an example of information that would be free?
That one usually is.
Yeah, I think that would be information about.
Because you mentioned stuff that if you already published it or if you haven't published, that that would remain free.
Yeah, so like the example I used, that was one of the 10 questions that I just, I knew three of the salaries she asked for off the top of my head, my own Bryce's and Russ's, and I just, you know, typed them in and said, this is what, this is what you make. So.
We are, we are not, we are not, and we cannot hide the ball because there's criminal and civil penalties against the government and quite frankly, against employees that, you know, that violate the act. So you gotta follow the act.
Like the salaries, could we put like in one of the folders on the website? Have it just be salaries and have like the title of the position and like a salary?
I'd like ranges, yeah. I'd like to do ranges with our next budget approval. In fact, I have a friend working on it. He's, he graduated with me in the MPA program and he's seeking residencies from Africa. And he said, what are some projects I can do to add value to Perry? And I said, here's one. Well, now, update our fee schedule, put in salary ranges, look at salary ranges with comparable cities. So he's working on all that. And I plan on approving it in the next budget cycle. So when you approve the budget, you're also approving ranges for each position.
And that can get put in the website?
Yep.
Somewhere so somebody can easily go on and pull that up?
Yep. It would just, we would just, it'd be attached to the budget. It'd be like the final 10 pages of the budget. So that anyone who wants to see that can go in. We could have it separate, too. I mean, it's easy, just split the PDF. But, yeah, I don't have any, we don't have anything tied. Happy to share that stuff with anybody.
So no, we post our agendas, we post the minutes on the website as well, right? So if somebody wanted an invoice or something that was talked about in a city council meeting, they can easily just search it on there?
Yeah, if you go under documents, we have, there's tons of documents that we keep online. We have our budgets on there, we have our audits on there, we have minutes on there, we have agendas on there, and tons and tons of documents. Most of what people say, hi, wish this was posted on the city website, is.
Can packets get put on there? Or is that not okay?
It's a whole lot of documents. You know, quite frankly, you don't put it, you wouldn't put it on there until you've seen it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, after the meeting with that.
You know, I.
Because I mean, we already get them digitally anyway.
I will say, the older minutes and things won't be searchable. It's been all new ones or.
Right, but new ones could be. I mean, since we get a digital copy of it after the meeting, could that get put in with the minutes that's available to public?
Yeah, as long as there wasn't anything in executive session, any.
Right.
Executive session.
No, yeah, executive session. But I mean, like the packets that we get.
The agenda.
After the meeting becomes public.
Yep.
I mean, that's not scanning thing, because it's already scanned in.
Something like this, though, that got pushed out, that was in packet A, that no action was taken.
Right.
Does that make that packet now not correct?
Yeah.
Because there was no action taken on that particular item. To me, that'd be the only thing. There are things that we table or we post on. Now that packet looks like item A was.
Well, I will tell you.
I guess you compare it to the minutes, but they'd be different.
I have it at City Hall.
Yeah, every packet is saved.
It's saved.
And so if somebody wanted to search.
Just like you presented. It's kept in a binder at City Hall and I got them from back in 1960s.
Right. Well, the paper version of it. Is there a digital version? I wouldn't want to go through all that paper.
The chicken ordinance. If someone pulls the chicken ordinance, you all didn't approve the chicken ordinance.
Right.
But it's in the packet. So if you're not educated about what was actually approved at the meeting.
Right. I see that.
You have to look at the minutes.
So, maybe a little bit off topic, but stuff that's published, is there contact information for all of us on the website?
There should be.
Has that someone told us they couldn't find it up?
Oh, we just don't have a picture of Shay.
I'm an extra one.
Yet.
Yet.
You know, I would, you know, at the minimum, what you'd do is you'd put, you'd put ordinances and resolutions, you know, official actions once they were passed.
Right.
And, you know, we've got the codification up there and I don't know, I haven't looked at it. But, you know, does it have new ordinances passed? Because they only get codified every once in a while. But, you know, you adopt this, you shouldn't have to call it here. There's a new ordinance on that. You shouldn't be able to go online and take a look at that. That wouldn't be hard.
So, this leads me to a question. I'm just thinking out loud here is, I like a lot of things in this ordinance and I think it's good to move forward and match what the state has. But there are people out there that are gonna look at this and go, they're trying to hide something or they're trying to make this more difficult. Could we have some talking points or something that says, yes, this is, this is a good ordinance that needs to be passed, but here's four things that now we're going to start publishing that we didn't publish before? Because transparency is important to this council. I made that number up, four things, but I mean, we've talked about several things. And if we could make those automatic on the website, maybe it's two things. I don't know. But I think that's a nice trade-off.
We do agendas and minutes. We ought to add resolutions and ordinances once they get approved, you know?
All of our ordinances, it's out there.
Well, but are, as they get passed, are they on there?
Should get updated.
Okay.
But the whole thing, it's, you're gonna make the whole thing. It might be nice if there was.
Yeah, the whole code, the whole code is online.
Right.
Right.
But then.
It's a current appendix with the changes for the year.
Yeah, something like that that says the recent changes.
Yeah.
Because that's what you're kind of referring to.
Right.
It's not just searching for.
So you don't have to call here for the chicken ordinance. It's online.
How often do we put on the minutes? Because on our website right now.
They're a little behind.
As I say, the most recent one we have is August of 24. We don't have anything from 25.
We were moving from one, some of the other ones, so, yeah.
That's way behind. We'll get them updated.
That's just for the minutes, but the agendas are always on there.
Yep.
The other minutes, we've been a little.
Well, when you go to the municipal code, does it have new ordinances up as a?
As a search item or?
Yeah, as a search item.
I don't think it does.
Well, I think it's.
I don't think it says like, like having a tab that says like new updated items.
Yeah, yeah. That's what many codes have. And when you go to ordinances, it has, you know, most recent ordinances. You can just hit those. And that's something we could add.
Can we do that through American legal? Do you think they do that on there? Because that's who we go through.
That's supposed to be right.
Yeah. No, it doesn't.
I think pausing to have the discussion was important. And so I appreciate that, that we were able to do that. Because I think that helps with transparency, too. That if we looked at it and like really looked at it and understood it. Because if I would've voted last council meeting, I don't, I don't think I would've had a grasp on really what we were doing. I think that was helpful and I appreciate it.
And even now, like someone, I mean, before this discussion, if somebody came to me and said, hey, I want to request records, I would've gone to City Hall. I would've been able to answer that.
Well, I was just getting ready to talk about it. It might be good to make sure we do internal training.
Yeah.
For everyone how to handle this, to anybody that gets asked and answer the question.
Right. Kind of Randy's talking points, having those, like when we do these new changes, for us as council, having talking points for us. So when we're answering questions, we're not just saying, hmm.
Yeah. Because there's such a fine line between the role of being advocates and
we don't know the weeds and we shouldn't know the weeds.
Right.
Right? But still, there, we should be able to answer some questions. And I would be, I was the same way, Lawrence.
Right.
Like, I'm not sure.
Well, we should be able to tell people how to get through the weeds.
Yes, right.
Well, as passionate as this council is about transparency, that we put it in our plan, I want to make sure that we're doing the things as we're moving forward with good acts to continue to. To, to continue to make people realize that's, that is important.
Right. Hundred percent.
I, I move we approve the, the ordinance.
Second.
This one?
I would not want to pay the tip on it.
It's a little bit different than what was in our.
Oh, so the one in the packet is not?
That's why I'm asking.
No, no, no. They amended with the.
Yeah, that's the one we're recommending.
This one?
Yep.
Yes.
Cause the only change is just that highlighted part?
Uh, I need to be honest.
That always helps.
I changed, if, if you look at the original one, I looked back at the ordinance and we're amending chapter two, not chapter one. Okay. Cause see all these start with two. If you look at the building, it says one. And then I made it a little cleaner. This does say we're amending article seven, but I took out the first reference for seven. So I changed the title slightly. Okay. But other than that, and then what I said, because we already had an article seven. I said here that by the adoption of an amended article seven, the original one said that by the adoption of a new article seven. And it's not, it's an amended article seven. So the other things I amended have nothing to do with the ordinance, but.
But they're all in this copy?
Absolutely. It's all here and it's all right now.
I move we adopt the amended.
Are you gonna read all that?
Um, I'm just assuming you read it already. I'll say with your motion.
We got one from Davis. Thank you.
I never heard you. I'm sorry.
Okay. So coffee.
Yes.
Lutzow?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldarn?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
Four of them.
Yes. So with that, I guess Nate, Bryce, do you guys want to email something out to us or? Kind of like with what Randy was talking about, like something for us to.
Talking points?
Yeah.
Yeah, happily. No.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll promise.
Well, and I, I think what was really kind of helpful was more than even just the talking points was adding some of that stuff to the website.
To the webpage.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we've heard you on that issue.
Item number nine, consider approval of emergency clause for ordinance number 2025 dash 24.
And coffee.
Yes.
Lutzow?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldarn?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
O'Shea? Yes. Four of them.
Yes. All right. Item 10, discuss and if deemed appropriate, set date and time for a strategic plan work session. So we've tackled quite a few things on our previous strategic plan. And so we need to really go back and revisit it and take a look at, take out the things that we've gotten the ball moving on and then kind of re-update it and revisit it. So here's some of the proposed days that Nate put in. Does anybody have conflicts or?
I cannot. The 20, the 21st. January 21st. Is that one I can?
Available 12th most likely.
Available. Okay.
On what day?
The 12th?
12th.
Did you say unavailable there?
So we're looking February.
February.
9th or 11th.
Are these Mondays?
Monday and Wednesday.
Not all of them.
Oh, all of them are.
Yeah.
It's fair weeks on January the 12th.
The 11th works best for me.
February 11th.
You said you couldn't, February?
Yeah, I, I'm all making arrangements to be here. It is a fair week.
After January 6th, I will be available almost any date you want.
Sounds like someone's retiring.
Unless you're babysitting or something.
May have to bring a newborn with me, but.
They're all working.
It's exciting. So February 11th is what I'm hearing?
Works for me.
Yeah. Five to eight. Sounds great. I'll send out a invite for everybody.
I've, I've got a question. It's, it's two hours, correct? If it's more than that, what was?
Five to eight.
Five to eight, three hours. Okay. Just wondering if we want to do, go ahead and try to find two dates in case.
Just in case.
We can't hammer out everything we need hammered out and something that's strategic plan is important.
And even leading up to that.
And we can always pick a date after that February day.
Right. I'm sure Nate, you could probably send out kind of a list of things that we've, that you've accomplished or tackled so far and then.
Yeah, in preparation. That'd be good.
And get that to us before then so we can kind of start visiting it a little bit. And we can even do kind of what we did before, just smaller groups. If we need to. Uh, just kind of go over, you know, some things.
Maybe if you can resend us some of the stuff that you're sending us, the visual of the different components. I liked all that. That's good stuff to share with people and to get that updated would be good.
Yeah, I'll absolutely do that.
So I have number 11, consider setting utility rebate cap for, oh wait, this one we're gonna table this one because you don't have everything ready quite yet.
Yeah, you, there were a couple of questions asked by council that we're still gathering information on.
Yep. So that one, we're gonna hold off for our next meeting?
Yep, we'll have that next meeting.
All right. Item 12, consider award of bid and entering into the public construction contract with Anytime Roofing Incorporated in the amount of $66,500 concerning the roof system at office slash hanger building number one at the Perry Municipal Airport. Authorizing the award of the contract to Anytime Roofing Incorporated as the lowest responsible bidder. Detailing reasons in the public record why the bid was not awarded to the lowest bidder. Authorizing payments and other actions and signatures required for all related documents and transactions.
Yeah, so this one's from the hail damage from June. And it actually took us this long to get three bids. It's very, very difficult to find roofers right now who have the capability to do airport hanger roof. Um, we have the money from the insurance payouts and money's not, not a concern. And the only reason we didn't go with the lowest is because we went with the, the company that has done large projects and large workforce in the past. And this is a large project. Um, and we had a little bit of concern with going with this other group because they haven't, uh, one, their method was more invasive and two, they're, uh, they haven't proven themselves on large projects like this. So we, not that we have anything against using them, but the plan is to use them for a couple of smaller things and see how those, those go. So anytime is the, the same group that did our water treatment plant roof, did a great job on that. And, uh, I think the only thing I would say is we have sent them a contract due to the amount of this, uh, that they have to provide insurance and things like that. Um, they haven't commented back on that. Uh, so I would appreciate negotiation power in terms of if, if they make any changes to that or refuse to do it, that I can then look at the other bidder, the 55,000. Cause we really, we need to get this done quickly.
Any motion that's made should include all those reasons why we're going with other than the lowest bidder. As detailed by Nate and they should be placed in the minutes.
And they are in a manual attached to the.
To that one.
I'm gonna let Austin make that motion then.
Who's brave enough to do it?
I'm pressured now.
I'll second it.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid for Anytime Roofing due to the fact that we have used them for large scale projects. We have proved their worth.
And the, and the method is less invasive.
And the method is less invasive.
I got you, Austin.
Form Z for five, insurance information.
Yeah, yeah, with the caveat that they, they, uh, they followed through with the contract as sent to them.
Not as well.
Second. And that is the big hanger that we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, coffee?
Yes.
Lutzow?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldarn?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
Four of them.
Yes. All right, we're gonna forego item 13 because that one's not ready yet either. So item 14, new business. Saying none. Item 15, consider convening into executive session to confer on a matter pertaining to the economic development of the city of Perry to discuss a proposal to entice the location of residential developer to the community to build single family dwellings and thereby approve the economic development of the city as public disclosure of the proposal or interfere with the development and implementation of this proposal.
So moved.
Sorry.
And coffee?
Yes.
Lutzow?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldarn?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Worth?
Yes.
Are you back? I can smash wood.
Just laughing at him, not you.
I want to sue the rest of the council.
Motion, Bledsoe, Bledsoe, as long as you don't protest.
Alright, we have a motion to reconvene.
Second.
Couple seconds.
Okay, Coffee?
Yes.
Bledsoe?
Yes.
Davis? Yes. Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hoshayn?
Yes.
Four of them.
Yes. Alright, adjourn.
Okay.
Alright, let's call our meeting to order for the Perry Municipal Authority. Have roll call.
And Coffee?
Here.
Bledsoe?
Here.
Marshall? Davis?
Here.
Cold Iron?
Here.
Rupp?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Hoshayn?
Here.
Four of them.
Here. We've got form, item one consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And Coffee?
Yes.
Bledsoe?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hoshayn?
Yes.
Four of them.
Yes. Alright, let's go down to item number six. Ratify award of bid and entering into the public construction contract with Anytime Roofing Incorporated in the amount of $66,500 concerning the roof system at Office/Hanger Building Number One at Perry Municipal Airport authorizing the award of the contract to Anytime Roofing Incorporated as the lowest responsible bidder detailing reasons in the public record why the bid was not awarded to the lowest bidder authorizing payments and other actions and the signatures required for all related documents and transactions. We're all looking at you.
Just making the same motion.
Same motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You gotta have the... The lowest, or why we're not going with the lowest bidder.
Yeah, you have to do that.
That whole thing, word for word.
Nervous now?
Can't he just say I moved the same motion I moved in the...
Previous meeting?
Yes.
I'm making motion to approve the same motion I did at the previous meeting?
Okay. Coffee?
Yes.
Bledsoe?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hoshayn?
Yes.
Four of them.
Yes. Have any new business? Alright, let's adjourn.
Good.
Alright, let's call our meeting to order for the Perry Facilities Authority. Have roll call.
Coffee?
Yes.
Bledsoe?
Here.
Marshall? Davis?
Here.
Cold Iron?
Here.
Rupp?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Hoshayn?
Here.
Four of them.
Here. Alright, we've got form. Item one consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Yeah, Coffee?
Yes.
Bledsoe?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Hoshayn?
Yes.
Four of them.
Yes. Any new business? Adjourn.